Over this past month, we've had the great opportunity for our Love Where You Live Month. Every weekend, the city of Lamar is offering free dumps for the transfer station as well as at our Lamar dump. So I'm hoping that everybody's taking advantage of this to do their spring cleaning. I know last weekend was a little chilly, but hopefully this weekend will be nice and we'll have a better opportunity to do so. Once again, as I mentioned before, for those community members that are trying to look for certain community support, events, or ideas, or things that you can do to help your community, reach out to your neighbors and those that may be homebound or that cannot get out to take that, take their waste to the dump and see if you can help them out. I think helping one another will be a good thing and give you some community development projects to work on, whether it's a boy's house, a local church, local school group, or whatever it may be. So I would encourage you to look around and talk to your neighbors and hopefully we can all keep Lamar looking great and help to love where we live. With that said, Jeff Alexander was going to be here tonight, but he's not. Galen, would you be willing to do our invitation tonight? Galen Burden?
Father, we want to thank you and praise you for your love for us and your work in our lives and your protection, the things you're doing in our lives, and we appreciate that, Father. We pray now that you will just be given our city council the wisdom they need, the insight that they need. Father, we pray that you will just be helping them to understand the best decisions to make for us. Father, we just ask for your guidance and your direction upon them. We thank you for them. We thank you for these men and women who are leaders in our community, for our staff and our leaders within the administration and the workers. Father, we just thank you for all of this, and we ask for your continued blessing, your continued direction, and we thank you in the name of our Savior Jesus. Amen.
Councilman Gonzalez, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now 7:02 PM. I will call the meeting order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Mike Bellamy.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Pressman.
Here.
Mike Duffy.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Schwartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay. We've all had a chance to review the consent agenda, which included the ordinance on the second reading. Do we have any discussions or questions on that? Or changes? I move we approve.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda submitted. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye. Opposed, same sign. Mike?
I got the right one here. Turn it around. Sorry about that.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. All right, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. This is the audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda?
It's a little bit about that, but not indirect items.
Okay, well, if we're already going to talk about it in the agenda, do you want to wait, or I mean, it's up to you?
Whatever you want to do.
It's up to you. You have just three minutes if you'd like to speak. Go ahead.
Hi, Belinda Sturgis, and I want to thank you all for scheduling us to be on the agenda. And I just want to say that we're working really diligently because we want to be good partners with you and the education process that we're going to be doing with the marijuana. I think it's critical for our community that we continue the education of what happens. We've been gathering information, I'll be sharing that with you, and sharing some really vital information about health and public health and what's going on with it. As the reports are gathered, we get more and more information. There was a recent study that I just got this report last night from the House bill from 2021 for the legislature of studying the THC levels in marijuana and the impact upon people. So I'll be sharing that information with you as we progress, and if it's okay with your permission, I'd just like to email it to you. Is that all right with everybody?
I think that would be fine.
Okay. That's all I really have. I just want to thank you for...
Okay. The only thing I would like to throw out there, if you don't mind, is we had this discussion at the, when the council was trying to make a decision on whether to move forward with putting marijuana on the ballot or not. And at that time, I made the comment at the end after we made our vote that, you know, and I guess I want to remind you that we are seven citizens. We will not be making the decision. It's completely up to the community and up to the citizens of Lamar and the voters of Lamar. So even though we appreciate you bringing all this information to us, we're merely seven votes out of 8,000 or out of the 2,500. So my, I guess why I'm mentioning is that I would encourage you to not just focus on the city council during this campaign or during this election process, but really get out there and focus on the community and the voters, because we're not making this decision at all.
Correct.
And I'm just wanting to point that out before we get too far into this conversation and too far into the election mode, because we really won't be in the middle of this. This is a community vote, so...
Right. And so what I wanted to do is be proactive and provide you with the same information we'll be educating the public, but in case they contact you and say, "What about this? What do you know?", at least you'll have the information we're using to educate.
Okay.
And you'll have the ability to have it at your hands. We're just trying to be proactive in that aspect, out of respect for you and your positions as council members.
Okay.
And we thank you for your hard work and what you do.
All right. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, of course, I'll remind everybody that if you have questions or things that you'd like to ask, you can always message them on Facebook, or you can ask the question on a post. I'll ask during our final moments of the meeting, during our miscellaneous items, if there are any questions, and we'll try to address them at that time. So with that said, we will move on to the city treasures report. Kristen?
Good evening, thank you. The one thing I did want to report is that I did get the TAP grant submitted on Thursday, and it was due on Friday. We made a few minor changes and got it resubmitted and got confirmation that they received our grant application. So I just wanted to update you on that, that that did get submitted, so...
Okay, great.
And that's all I really had this evening, unless anybody has any questions.
Now, that TAP grant was for the sidewalks, is that correct?
Sidewalks, yes.
Okay. And have they started the other TAP grant with the sidewalks, one side?
It's not a TAP grant, but yes, we are working on it. It's a revitalizing Main Street. Stephanie was working on getting the necessary permits. You know, we've awarded the contract. The contractor is actually the one working on Main Street, so they're working on getting the special permits that they need from CDOT right now, so it is moving forward on that.
Okay. All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is the city clerk's report.
And I have no report tonight.
All right. Now we have the city administrators.
All right, I do have a long, quite a few items, and the most important and first one I want to talk about is we'd like to do the oath of office for our new police officer.
All right.
Is that okay?
Right. That'd be great. Would you like to say anything, Kyle, before we start?
Troy's been working with us for about a week now. Everything I know, Troy's done a good job, had some prior law enforcement experience, so that should help with our FTO program. I just look forward to him being a good addition to our department.
All right. So if you'd like to come over, is this your wife?
Yes, ma'am.
If you'd like to come over here, and we will do your smart image. She could come on this side for the flavors. All right. Well, thank you very much for working with the city of Lamar. We truly appreciate that. With that said, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Troy Appelled, do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
I, Troy Appelled, do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
I will faithfully and impartially enforce the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances of the city of Lamar.
I will faithfully and impartially enforce the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinance of the city of Lamar.
I do further swear to discharge the duties of a police officer for the city of Lamar, Colorado, to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God.
I do further swear to discharge the duties of a police officer for the city of Lamar, Colorado, to the best of my skills and ability, so help me God.
All right, congratulations, and thank you very much. I will lift your left hand. All right. Signatures for you?
Congratulations, Troy. Still got a few things to button up over here with you, so...
Okay. So we just have the one there, or both of these? All right. Thank you both, and again, congratulations. Welcome to the team.
All right, next, Coffee with Rob. The one I have here is Wednesday at Hickory House. So we've been steadily increasing our attendance, so we're doing some pretty neat idea swappings. Not all of them relate to everything we do in the city, but it's enjoying, and I think there's a lot of people that are starting to get involved, so it's pretty neat. Let me see, Addiction Support Workshop, April 28th to 29th, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's for providers and, let me see, oh, Friday for providers, and six to eight on Friday, and nine to 12 on Saturday for parents and caregivers. The Trailblazer Theater Company, Clue, onstage April 28th and 29th at 7:00 PM, and April 30th at 2:00 PM. Tickets are sold at Lamar Public Library. Free Dump Weekends, as the mayor said, is continuing. The first week of May, weekend of May will also be included. We have a 5K Run and Walk, Saturday, April 29th, 9:00 AM, the Willow Valley Route. We have Common Grounds for the Council. It's down here in the Cultural Events Center, Wednesday, May 3rd, 7:00 AM. We have a Library Craft Fair and Farm Market, May 6th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the Cultural Events Center. And we have a Kids Fishing Day on May 7th at Holly, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Wild West Barbecue Cook-Off, May 12th to 13th at Will Creek Park. We have Prowess Medical Center Health Fair every Wednesday from April 12th to July 26, 7:00 to 9:00 AM. And a reminder, I didn't have it on my list, but Lamar Day's coming up here in May, so it's May 20th. May 20th, and Rod Run, and we're going to have all kinds of vendors and the Ducky Dash. I know you can buy tickets. I know I've seen those all over the place, so come out, have a good time. Weather looks right now, if you can look far enough ahead, it's going to be good. So I don't want to jinx anything, but it looks like it's going to be good weather. Projects update, can you show that, those two pictures that I...
Sure.
Just one of those projects that I kept giving you guys, "Hey, we'll look at it, we'll look at it, we'll look at it."
Okay.
And out at Escondido, I know that you guys are aware that we had a couple of rounds of trying to get somebody to come in and build it, and prices got crazy, and we started doing this on our own, and Kristen and everybody else has been involved with us building this scoreboard.
I can see it on the web.
Can't see it?
We can see that on the web. Not up here yet, but...
Well, anyway, we've, you can see all the progress. The building looks amazing. We got the scoreboards up. We're still going to do some signage and some stuff that's been added in there, but I wanted to show you guys that not everything is always two weeks out. We got some stuff up there.
It's still loading, Cory.
Is that what it is? Still loading?
Yeah, it's loading, it's hard to cast up there, but the viewers online can see it.
Yeah, the online viewers can see that, so...
Okay, you guys will get a chance to sit here in just a minute.
Okay.
I guess...
That scoreboard does look good.
It looks nice.
I was out there Saturday, and they were working on it.
The next thing I would, I don't want to step on Manuel's toes, but the water board asked me to give a reminder, we're one of the few areas that hadn't had the amount of moisture that we really needed compared to everybody else in Colorado, and we're having a rough go at it. We haven't mandatory water restrictions, but we would like voluntary water conservation between the hours of 11:00 AM and 6:00 PM to conserve water during this hottest part of the day as it heats up. And if there's not a whole bunch of additional moisture coming in, I know that they discussed making the recommendation that we go to those water conservation measures. So we're just trying to ask for some voluntary help at this time until we get some moisture. We've actually had to discontinue a couple of the wells that were getting too low and pulling in sand and stuff like that, so...
So to clarify, there is no water...
There is no water restrictions right now.
Those will be supplied by the council.
Yep.
But they're asking for no watering between 11:00 AM and no, and 6:00 PM?
Yes, between 11:00 AM and 6:00 PM to conserve water.
To conserve water.
We're not saying turn everything off and don't use any. We're trying to use those restrictions or cut back the amount of usage during those hottest hours of the...
We need to ask the community, no water...
Yep, this is all voluntary, nothing mandatory.
Right. And if we can, if that doesn't work, voluntary, then we would consider...
Well, we would take the process of getting you guys to approve something like that, and, you know, at some point, it would become mandatory, but I think we can see lots of clouds coming, and we're all praying that a lot of it gets to come out, so...
Okay, I know I've been asked that quite a few times over the last few weeks, so I just wanted to make sure I, it was clear for the listeners that 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM is our voluntary water restriction at this point, so...
That's correct.
Okay.
So, anything else miscellaneous, questions from the council, or I know that you guys had a little bit of actual fun here recently, got to go up and do some of the training. I know that it's a work in progress, and, you know, I expect a lot more results from it later, but the potential was evident from the first time we used it, so...
Okay.
I have one question. You mentioned free fishing on the 7th in Holly.
Yes.
You have one here at Gateway Park as well?
I think it's already done. Didn't we have fishing day already?
On the 6th, I think it was, wasn't it?
What's that?
Isn't it on the 6th at Gateway Park?
I'm sorry, I don't have that right here.
I have that on my mayor page. I was just looking to see if I had that. But I believe you're right. I think it was, and they're in that time on the 5th or 6th, so...
It makes sense, and we, I know that we've restocked it here recently too, so there's a lot of fish. I saw a lot of people there this weekend, even when it was cold, but...
Yes, North Gateway Park is Sunday, May 7th, from 1:00 till 3:00 PM. There'll be free fishing for the kids, and they'll also have some free gear for them as well. This weekend is Turk's Pond south of Tubus on Saturday, April 29th, and on Sunday will be a Leonard's Huddnall Pond in Los Anamis. So the 7th will be here at North Gateway Park in Lamar from 3:00 to 3:00.
I just had the wrong location. I had the wrong location, sorry.
So, just so you know. And if you have any questions, they do have it posted at the Coldhood Parks and Wildlife as well. There was also a ribbon cutting that will be, or groundbreaking that'll be happening next Friday for the Ark Valley Conduit in La Junta, or in the, I think it's in the Boone area, where they're doing the groundbreaking for the conduit as they move forward with starting that construction project. So if you have any more questions, you can call Rob or at the city, and we can get that information to you, but I'm very excited to see the conduit start its process and start moving in this direction. I know it'll be a long process with many, many years to go, but I thought I'd throw that out there.
No, thank you.
If you're talking about items.
Will you have any representation there?
I'm going to try to go, but it's like at 9:00 in the morning on a Friday, so it's a little difficult for me, but if you're the council members, I can forward that on to you.
I can send somebody if we don't, but, I mean, if you want to go, we can get you up there.
Okay. Okay, that would be great, if you could. All right, with that said, anything else, any questions for the city administrator before we move on?
Yeah, just something I wanted to mention, the coffee with the council, who, what will be joining us, which department had this time?
Well, I had scheduled the library.
The library, yes, okay. And so just to let everybody know, you know, on the 3rd, coming, you know, it's not just for departments to meet with us, but it's for anybody in the city who has any questions they want to bring up. It's a good time to just have some good, open discussions, and so I want to encourage you, show up and have coffee with the council.
Yep. All right.
Very good.
Okay, any other final things before we go with Rob? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Reports and correspondence from the council. This gives the council any opportunities to share some of their reports from their liaison appointments or from any of the information that they've received from the community members and the community, or concerns, issues that need to be addressed. So start down there with Joe. Do you have anything tonight?
Banging and zoning net, and they had a couple of topics that they are currently working on, and we already presently know about those. Part of it was the property up there by the golf course that they're zoning out and getting ready for that. And the other one that they were currently working on was the Upper Hill property that Upper Hill obtained was the homeless shelter.
That's right. And they're doing a lot of good work down there already.
Yeah, it seems like you started construction down over there and planning and zoning net with that, and so they're giving them some direction on that, and I believe they'll be presenting something to council here shortly.
Great. Wonderful. That's it. Okay, Mike?
LPI met today, but unfortunately, I don't have Google meetings on my tablet, so I was unable to attend, but I'm going to get an update on that.
Okay.
That's it.
Gary?
Public Safety met the other day, and we didn't do much because we were short one of our members, but the, some of the ladies went through the training with Kyle that the city council went through on Monday. I talked to both ladies, and they said it was really fun. I'm like, okay. But there, we're working on the public safety. We still need that one person to join us, and if maybe later you can explain the public safety or to them, because I don't know if anybody got back to the person who asked last week or the last council meeting. I am going to just give a small thing here on Prowess County Youth Council. They'll be having a workshop for middle school and high school kids, Thursday, April 27th, 4:30 to 6:30 at the youth building, and there's 25 slots, but 12 of them have been taken, so there's 13 left. So if you're interested, call 336-8721 and ask for Courtney, and that's on the 27th. On the 30th of April, they will be doing a bowling pins for prevention family bowling event, and that will be at the Lamar Lanes from 3:00 to 6:00, and the public's invited to that one. So come out and have a good time with them. They have the Youth Expo, which will be on May 1st from 10 to 6:00 PM. For the students, it'll be 10 to 4:00 PM, and the community, 4 to 6:00. Come out and, we're always saying there's nothing to do. We're finding plenty for people to do here, and we'd like to thank Courtney Newholz for doing all this. There'll be a movie in Holly Friday, May 5th, and that will be from 7:45 till it's over, okay? They will be doing the Prowess County Youth Council invites you to the Chalk, to Chalk the Walk over on 14th and Oak, and it's from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And I will forward this stuff to Martha to put on our Facebook. If you guys have any questions, call Courtney again, like I said, at 719-336-8721, and they do have activities for the kids every Friday at the youth public building, okay? That's all.
Okay. All right, Mike?
Just a couple of quick things. The Golf Board met, they've got tournaments going. I know I Got a Golf is one of the big ones. I think that was, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was last weekend or this weekend. It was last weekend, that's right. My calendar's messed up. And the only other thing, from the Airport Board, we met last week. The master plan is finalized and everything, and I believe Rob was going to get the council...
He was going to get some drives. They're getting his copies all the time, right?
What's going on there, but it looks like it's going to be, it's a good master plan. And that's all I have.
Good.
Water board met, and as you were sharing earlier, the city administrator was saying, we're just asking for people to be, you know, conscious of conserving water, especially during the heat time of the day. One of the measurements we got for snowpack, I think they said it had peaked at about 90 that last, maybe a week, was down about 70 at last count, and so pray for snow and rain, snow in the mountains, rain in the valleys.
In the next couple of days.
Any other items? All right, as for me, Rob and I have met with Prowess, or Prowess Medical Center's CEO, Karen Bryant. We usually meet with her once a month and just have discussions on different topics. They have a lot of things happening at Prowess Medical Center, and the board has been working very hard on their strategic planning and getting that approved and moving forward with the steps in their strategic plan. You know, one of the things that we had discussions were, on the last meeting, was discussing how well their birthing center is going. It's going extremely well. They've gotten a lot of different people from the region that's visiting Lamar now to take care of their birthing needs, of course, but that, as well as some of their other services. So they're going to be spending a lot of time trying to get word out of all the different services we have, because it's so important to support these when they bring these into our area. So one of the other items that we had talked about, and we've talked about this for a few months, is that a couple of years ago, the city council held a outdoor barbecue for the community, and it was on, in June. And the council handed out free hot dogs, and we had a swim night and a few other things just to try to mingle with our community and have some discussions, and I think that went fairly well. Prowess Medical Center is wanting to go in partnership with us to do another one this year. Their target is on June 9th, which is a Friday night. We felt that a Friday night might be good, because people are just getting off of work. It'd give them the opportunity to take their family out to attend this picnic, where we can have the council mingle, as well as some of the board and some of the providers from Prowess Medical Center. Prowess Medical Center and us in the discussion. I have a meeting tomorrow with the CEO of High Plains Community Health Center, and we're going to have the same discussion. Karen had mentioned she has spoke with Jean a few times as far as participating in these events, to not only bring our council together, but to bring both of our healthcare providers in the community together for this event. So one will be sponsoring a free swim night, the other will be sponsoring a free movie night. Council will be sponsoring hot dogs and a little picnic, and between the three of us, we should have a great event on June 9th, and that's what we're shooting for. Did you want to add anything?
No, that's what we were going to mention. I know that we're going to do those proclamations and some announcements next council.
Yeah, so that was another thing, is National Hospital Week is the week of the 8th. There's also Healthcare Providers' Day, so they'll be at our next meeting, I believe, with the proclamation, so that way we can try to encourage, support those events as well. All right, any questions before we move on? Any comments? Are you guys all good with moving forward with that type of event, with the picnic and partnership?
Sounds great.
I think it's good. It's good.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we'll bring it to the council for a formal vote. We're just trying to framework with the two entities before we bring it to the council for the final votes and all of that to discuss and formalize it, so... All right, with that said, we will move on to agenda item number one. Public hearing for temporary modification of premise for Shay Emick DBA Las Brisas. This was an item that we had scheduled at our previous meetings, so now is the time for us to proceed. Do we have a motion to move into the public hearing?
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second to move into the public hearing? All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are now in the public hearing.
Jerry.
Oh, Jerry?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, we are now in the public hearing.[1722.62] Okay, we are now in the public hearing. First off, we'll start off with having the city clerk let us know about the proofs of publication and what work she has completed. Linda?
Okay, so Shay Emick, owner of Las Brisas Restaurant, submitted application for temporary modification of premise to her current liquor license to host a private party on May 6th of 2023. She's requesting a modification to allow for the closure of West Elm Street from Main Street to the alleyway between Main Street and 5th Street. The area to be modified will be enclosed in fencing that has been approved for special events in the past and will not include the sidewalk area on the north side of Elm Street. She is requesting enclosure from 8:00 AM on May 6th to 10:00 AM on May 7th. Shay submitted application on March the 16th with fees for the temporary modification of premise. At the April 10th meeting, council approved to schedule the public hearing for tonight, and notice was posted onsite and in the newspaper on or before April 13th.
Okay.
Other than that, turn it over to Chief.
All right. Chief, would you like to come up and...
You want me to go ahead and? Basically, I think this is the one, we looked into it, and because they haven't done this kind of one before, and it's correct, right? Normally, what we base it off of is in the past, have we done it? No problems, and so I don't know if he's really prepared to endorse it right now. Is that true? But not, but not against it either? So let them make the decision?
Right, and that is within the laws, and we talked to fire department, they went over there and checked it, is they have to leave two doors remain open, so they can have up to 350 people in the outside fenced area. So like the city administrator said, we've never done one like this there, so all I can tell you is it's within laws and within the fire code.
Okay. So you don't have a recommendation, you're just letting us know that it is compliant with the laws and the ordinances of the city of Lamar?
Correct.
We're in the fire code, right?
If we had done this a couple of years in a row, and next year after, you know, if this one goes and everything is good, then I would suggest that he would probably make the recommendation of approval, but I don't think he has anything really to base it off of.
Well, and that's fine, just as long as we know that it's legal and approved by the law, so, okay, that helps a lot. All right, any questions for the chief or the administrator or the clerk from the council?
I have a concern, couple of things. One, we're going till 10:00 AM on Sunday. I have a kind of concern, why, why are we going so late into Sunday morning on that?
So I don't think that's the time that festivities they're gonna have, that's the street closure? So if they have time to get things cleaned up, then the street department can go clean up the cones. That's what they're asking for. I believe in here, on your application...
It's from 12.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, that's, that's the time they're gonna have the graduation party, but they're asking beforehand to have the street closed, to get it set up, and then, so they can get it cleaned up by 10:00 AM the next morning. They're not out there at 3 o'clock in the morning trying to clean everything up, I think is the...
Yeah, my other concern is we've got construction on Main Street, and Main Street is one of those streets that people tend to use on a detour. I know we got several streets there, but it's just that concern also of the construction.
Okay. And they'll have fencing on there to block it off as well.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Well, I also had a concern, but it was kind of answered, and the concern was that with the police department and fire department having access to the street, if there was any issues or problems where they needed to go through, because that's an awful long time for the street to be blocked off.
And we would let dispatch know, we do street closures, the water department will close streets for repairs or whatever it is. We let our dispatch center know, they broadcast, broadcast that out to all the responding agencies around here, so we're aware of it well before. Whenever we're paving streets, we close those streets for days at a time. So this isn't anything out of the ordinary for us closing a street, and it's only half a block that's gonna be closed, and we'll know about it beforehand, too, so, you know, when you take Oak Street instead of Elm Street, we can, we can do that.
So with have a block that'll leave open the alleyways if someone needs to detour or go around it?
Correct.
They can always go through that.
One of the things I told Ms. Emick is you can't close down other businesses, they still have to be able to access, and she was able to do that. The north sidewalk's gonna be open, so they'll still be able to walk down there. The businesses to the west over will still be open, so it's not gonna affect any other business other than her own.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So if this is they're allowing their liquor license to basically spill out onto the street, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Inside the fenced area?
So I guess they don't have any extra controls for, I mean, it is a graduation party?
Mm-hmm.
For you drinking, see where I'm going?
Absolutely, and it's their liquor license, right? If they get caught, it's consequences for their liquor license. So I guess if it was my business, I'd want extra precautions there to make sure my liquor license isn't in jeopardy. That's not up to me, that's up to the business owner. And they know the consequences if they get caught, if there's kids there drinking, there's consequences, and they fully understand those, I'm sure.
And I would say, I mean, we've had other events where organizations have the special event permits. I think the difference on this one is if an organization loses it, that's not their livelihood and their full-time business, whereas Las Brisas, if they put that at risk, or if the state comes in and finds somebody and they lose that license, it's gonna affect their business year-round, every day. So putting that burden of responsibility back on them is probably easier for our staffing as well as all of that, but does that answer your question, though?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Daniel, did you have anything, or?
No, I mean, the context for me is just that, you know, putting a fence up doesn't change if they had a graduation party there without the fence, the risks are the same.
Absolutely. It's just more of a, kind of a barrier to this is okay and this is not, that's the point being the fence.
Okay. Nothing, Jerry?
No.
So everybody has their comments, questions answered? All right, thank you, Kyle.
You bet.
Okay, with that covered, city council has made their comments and questions. We will open the floor. So we'll open the floor and start off with anybody that is in favor of this temporary modification of premise. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in favor of this? Yes, please, and you'll just need to state your name and address for our record, since it's a public hearing.
Courtney Newhold, address is 30240 County Road 12.
Okay.
So I am here to speak in favor of the street modification on May 6th for the graduation party. Shay Emick was unable to come today because she is chaperoning the DECA Kids in Florida for internationals. I do know that they are having the fencing, and they are going to be monitoring the alcohol use. They're only gonna be serving to patrons 21 and older. She did state that they will have security on staff as well, so I just would like to speak in favor of that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the visitor? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this temporary permit? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone opposed to this temporary modification of premise?
Good evening, I'm Galen Burnett, 800 South 6th Street, Lamar, Colorado. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about graduation. I saw in the application that she was saying she's planning on having a graduation party, evidently for somebody who wants to hire that. It didn't say what kind of graduation. I assume that since it's on May the 6th, it's a graduation from LCC, because Lamar High School doesn't graduate until May the 12th. So I think that's a fair assumption, but I don't have any verification of that. I doubt that the majority of students at LCC who are graduating this year are over the age of 21. LCC gives only an associate's degree, which is normally two years beyond a high school degree. Most kids graduate 17, 18, 19. Two years will not get you to 21, except if you were a high, a nine, a 19-year-old when you graduated. So I'm a bit concerned about that. Why are we having a party for people who are, the majority of them who are graduating are not eligible to be drinking? Why are we doing that? Just because of the money? I think that's a poor reason. No amount of underage drinking is legal. No amount of underage drinking is legal. We know that underage drinking can lead to consuming too much alcohol, poor decision-making, injuries, alcohol overdose, possible death. If we're, if we're planning on having a lot of adults there, then that'd be great, but if we have a lot of youth there, that puts some, some pressure. And I know Colorado has had some discussion and passed some laws about if a parent is there, that sometimes they can allow their children to drink at underage, but I think that's mostly just for being in your home and so forth like that, not at a public building. In fact, I think if you find in the Colorado Legislature standards, you won't find that as a possibility. The effects of alcohol can be very deceptive. People are, are able to do things that they don't think that they're able to do. They're not able to do things that they think that they are able to do. When people drink alcohol, they may be temporarily feeling great, warm, happy, but they're being fooled. As the alcohol level arises, the effects on the body, the potential risks multiply, not just add, but multiply. Inhibitions and memory becomes affected, so the people may say and do things that they wouldn't do if they were sober. They say and do things that maybe they don't even remember the next day or the day after They regret that, hopefully. Decision-making skills are affected, so people are at greater risk for driving under the influence, risk of alcohol-related traffic deaths, and unsafe decisions about sex, aggression. You know, a lot of people think that people mellow out, but all too many people who are drinking are more aggressive, potentially leading to things like verbal abuse, arguments, disputes, physical fights, and we've seen a lot of violence there where people are actually killed because of disagreements while they've been drinking. Coordination is messed up, physical control is messed up, you lose, you lose your balance, you have slurred speech, blurred vision, normal activities also become disruptive. Consuming dangerously high amounts of alcohol can lead to alcohol overdose and death. When people drink too much, they eventually pass out, and many of them die. Reflexes like gagging and breath, breathing can be suppressed. That means the people who have had too much alcohol, no matter what their age, can vomit and choke, or just stop breathing completely. I hate to say this, but I better, when I was younger, one of my favorite singers was the Mama and Papa's. You guys remember that? Remember what happened to Mama Cass?
Yep.
Yeah? She choked on her own vomit. Combining medication with alcohol is even more dangerous and life-threatening. Drinking to celebrate graduation can result in vandalism, arrests, sexual assaults, injuries, trips to the emergency room, alcohol-related traffic crashes.
Okay.
We need to watch out. We need to celebrate with our graduates, play it safe, they can have celebrations, but I sure recommend that you do it alcohol-free.
Okay.
I'd like to also tell you that 49.3 of full-time college students, 49.3%, excuse me, who are ages 18 to 22 drank alcohol in the past month. That's almost 50%. They're already doing things that they shouldn't. We should not enable them, we should not be encouraging them. Now is the time for the city council to set a precedent. We didn't, we talked about there wasn't a precedent for this. Now is the time to set a precedent. We do not believe in alcohol usage, that's gonna be causing problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition of this temporary modification of premise?
Just have a comment, I think it'd be great to have a courtesy shuttle if they're gonna have a party there, have some way they have a courtesy shuttle to take people home if they are.
Okay. Do you have something like that planned, or does she have something like that planned?
I am not aware of that, but I definitely think I should talk to her about it.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other questions from the council before we close out this public hearing?
Just, just a comment, to be clear, we're not authorizing or voting on any underage drinking or any other illegal activity.
I have a question for Kyle. I just have a comment as well, that it is her liquor license that will be put on the line.
Yes, as a business.
As a business.
You got a question for Kyle?
Yes. So you said it was legal, is there any kind of a specification as to the fencing? Is this like chain link fence? Is this plastic snow fence?
So this is the chamber, does the beer garden every year, same type of fence that's used over there, that's, that's been the city council's requirement in prior events. Like this.
Thank you.
One quick question, specifically for Courtney. The security, are you hiring private security or police department?
They're hiring private security, by our understanding. And again, there, there is no plan for underage drinking. They will be monitoring inside and outside the building, just as they do during any private event during Las Brisas. I'm sure that she'll have extra staff, but, so there is, there is no plan for underage drinking.
Yeah. I think, I echo what Joe said, this, this is putting her liquor license at risk, so I'm sure it's probably all, because without it, she's, no, business is gonna take a nosedive real quick if, if something bad happens.
Request from Rob or Kyle, whichever, after the event's over, can we get some kind of update as to how it went, so in the future we might could gauge that, you know what I'm saying? If everything went good, or if we had 50 arrests, or, you know?
Okay. Okay, if there's no more comments, we need a motion to close out of the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close out of the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
So the next item on the agenda is to make a decision concerning the public hearing decision, temporary modification of premise for Shay Emick. What is the council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve temporary modification of premises.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a mo, a motion and a second. Are there any final questions?
I do have a question. Courtney, is there a way we can find out who her security is and how many will be there?
I can, I can ask how many we need to know.
Okay.
Well, I doubt that we can find out before the vote.
Right.
Or during the meeting, so do, and we really can't postpone the meeting.
Right, right. If she could just let Linda know how many's gonna be there for security or Kyle, just to be on the safe side.
And then just, and then just email us with those numbers? Would that be fair to say?
Well, do you want to put a requirement in your motion to have so many, or one or two?
I do not.
No?
No.
All right.
Just as long as we know there's security there.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Seeing no other questions, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
And if you could give us back that report after, at the next meeting, that would be great. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Agenda item number two, which is fair election practices in an upcoming election. This was initiated by concerned citizens of Lamar who had asked to be placed on the agenda to talk to the council about some of the information they wanted to provide us. So it looks like we have Darla.
Yes, Darla Sbeck, my business address is 1204 East Darla, Lamar, Colorado, and I wanna thank you and really appreciate that you're giving us time to be on the agenda. We know that this is an election year, we know that being proactive is always also helpful to be preventative, to help prevent problems, so we have been really working hard to try to educate on a lot of issues, and one of the areas of issues for education is the provisions in the Colorado Constitution and the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act as it relates to a local government, city council, city clerk, and we always think it's a good idea to always remember these things, have as much resources as possible to be able to look at and study, and so that's why I've submitted some key portions of a really good manual that the Colorado Secretary of State put out, it's the Campaign and Political Finance Manual, and it's really... And it's really, I think, applicable in at least two really important areas. One is the campaign contribution and expenditure reporting and compliance, and that's covered in this manual. It's also covered in the Colorado Constitution and the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act. It's obvious that there's going to be circulated a petition with regard to allowing marijuana in the city of Lamar. That's at least one petition that we're aware of. There may be more petitions that are looked at that may be approved for circulation. And in the context of, for example, a citizen issue, like the petition that has been approved for circulation, it's really important to know, I think, for the city council, for the city clerk, for those in department positions within the city, to understand the reporting requirements for the issue committee, the proponents of a petition. It's really important that campaign contributions, not only monetary contributions, but in-kind contributions be understood in order to make sure that they're adequately reported, and timely reported, because there are penalties for not timely reporting. It's also up to the city clerk, who is basically the election officer for the city of Lamar, to be able to make sure those reports are received, make sure that if they're not received, notice by certified mail is sent out that they are received. Because there's some pretty significant penalties for the circulators for not presenting their expenditure reports, their donation reports. $50 a day for every day that that report is late. If there are more than three violations, it goes up to $500 a day, more than three violations, $1,000 a day. So there are some real, potentially costly effects of not filing that report. And so it's good for the citizens to know that, who are proponents of the petition, but also for city in general to know what is going to be required of these proponents of these measures. Now, the Colorado Constitution actually defines what a contribution is. It's not just a monetary contribution. The Colorado Constitution includes in their definition of contribution to, for example, the circulation of a petition, or a supporting of an issue, the fair market value of the loan of property made to, for example, an issue or a petition committee. We do know that the proponents of the petition have been identified in the petition, they are essentially the leaders of the committee that are circulating the petition and the ones responsible for making the reporting. I wanted to bring the idea of in-kind contributions before the council, because it's really critical when you're a public official, to understand the in-kind contributions. So the use of space, for example, for collecting signatures, let's say, as happened the last time a pro marijuana petition was circulated, it was, they were, some local businesses sponsored that petition, or allowed that petition to be signed at their business, that's a contribution. The use of space for the gathering of signatures is considered an in-kind contribution. A monetary fair market value has to be placed on that, and it has to be in the report that is submitted to the clerk. That's really important, because compliance with that, as I said, can be, or non-compliance can be very costly. Printing of petitions by businesses or citizens is considered an in-kind contribution. It's also an in-kind contribution to sponsor events, for example, or allow circulating a petition at events. That's considered an in-kind contribution, because you're giving a venue, you're allowing a venue for the collection of signatures, for example. So the proponents of that, those measures, have to include the fair market value of those items in their expense, campaign expense and contribution reports to the city clerk.
So I'm curious if I-
Sure, absolutely.
I think the question that I had was, there's a difference when it's a public event, where they're circulating a petition, or if we are actually saying they're going to have this event at this location for doing this. When you're doing it as we are basically closing off this public facility, say Shore Arts Center Park, and letting them use it just to collect signatures, then it would need to be rented, paid for, or something where they are paying for the use of it, just like any other citizen could.
Well, and that's the second issue that I was getting, too, because that's got more restrictions on it if you're a public entity.
Right, but if we were having Oktoberfest and they were doing a petition circulation, that's a public event where anybody and everybody could be there. We're not assigning it just for petition taking. That's, am I getting that correct?
To a limited extent, you may be getting it correct. So for example, if they're gathering signatures off of city property, then you're correct. If they're gathering signatures at a city-sponsored event, or a city-sanctioned event, or a city-announced event that the city is participating in or supporting, or on city property, then you're crossing a line. And that was actually the second topic that I was going to be getting to.
Like Lamar Days.
Like Lamar Days, or any of your parks, allowing it in the gathering of signatures in any of the city venues.
Well, I guess that's the question, is-
That's your question.
The difference between allowing, or it's a public event where they're doing that. I mean, how do we monitor that as a city?
I would submit that you have a duty to monitor it, because there's a second provision in the city, in the-
Because they did that last year, didn't they, with the question?
For circulating petitions?
No, I mean, talking about Belinda's group last year for your petition-
I don't, no, we knocked on doors. We actually knocked on doors of residents and gathered petitions.
Did you guys register issue duty last year?
We didn't have any contributions that we needed to register for.
Okay, I was just asking for clarification.
It was, yes.
Individual components?
Yes.
So just like James and I have to consider that.
I don't know what you've done, so I can't answer that question.
Okay. I didn't mean to get sidetracked, I'm not trying to do that.
Okay, thank you.
But I just wanted to get clarification, because it's a fine line there that-
Absolutely.
You know, it's kind of hard to do that, so that's why I was asking. Do you have a question?
Well, yeah, I was hoping to clarify this, you know, back to Lamar Days, so if they're circulating their petition over there during the car show, that's where I'm at. You're saying that we could be held liable for that?
So let me go on to my next question. So there is further restrictions on governmental officials and governmental entities when it comes to the Fair Campaign Practices Act. And that's included in the packet that I gave you at page 134. It's actually, the manual's 134, it's the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act, found at Colorado Revised Statute 145, 1-45-117. And it's the limitation on contributions for public officials. So since the definition in the Colorado Constitution talks about property contributed, for example, the collection of signatures, property allowed for the collection of signatures, I would submit that there are further restrictions on the use of city property. So essentially, no political subdivision, which the city of Lamar is a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, shall make any contribution, which I would submit, under the definition of contribution, includes the loan of property, or the use of your property. Nor shall it make any, any such entity make any donation to any other person for the purposes of making a contribution. So allowing it through an event that's being used on city property, that's also prohibited. Or make any contribution to urge electors to vote in favor or against any local ballot issue.
I have a question.
The problem that city council has, if I might finish this thought, the problem that city council has is, you're allowed to make a factual statement that sets forth both sides, that doesn't take a position. The appearance of impropriety, the appearance of supporting the circulation of the petition by allowing it to be circulated at city events, on city-sponsored events, or even city-sanctioned events on city property, that's, I think you're crossing a line. I think you're opening yourself up to potential penalties. I would submit those penalties because of the potential of the interpretation of the violation of the Fair Campaign Practices Act. I would submit that the violations of those are, you have to, the individual city council members, the individual public official that allowed that, has to reimburse the fair market value of that, of that contribution. And not only that, but can be penalized two to five times the value of that contribution, and have to pay for the complainants, the person who brought the enforcement through the Colorado Secretary of State, their attorney's visa. So the potential is huge in crossing that line.
So the reason why I ask that question is because I remember being at Oktoberfest, and two people coming up from that campaign handing me a flyer regarding that campaign. So they were handing out the campaign last year for the vote no on marijuana in the city limits.
Okay.
And I was at the Oktoberfest specifically, and I remember getting two of those in my pocket, because people walked up to me and said, here, here is this. So is there a difference between collecting petitions and handing out information at events? That's what I'm asking.
No, so what I'm saying is whether it's for or against, city council not only can't promote it, can't allow it to happen, but should be enforcing against it happening.
What I'm asking is, they were there handing out flyers at the event on city property.
And I wasn't aware of that.
So that would have been a violation in what you're telling me?
I'm saying it would have been something that you would want to actively prohibit.
So we should have kicked them out at that time, when I saw five people doing that?
Or sanctioned them, or, not sanctioned them, but advised them that it's not permitted on publicly-owned property.
Okay, I wish we would have known that last year during your campaign.
Which is why this is a great idea. And I wish I would have known that that was happening, because I, oh, absolutely, I do.
You understand the optics of that, right? You understand the optics of that, that they didn't play that out last year, and now it's-
And I didn't know that it was happening, because I didn't go to Oktoberfest last year, I don't-
Now, that's not a contribution if they buy a table and they do it from their own table at one of these events, right?
If it's on city property.
If it's on city property, then-
Well, if they're participating in an event, that everybody can buy a ta, that's not us contributing anything to it, right?
Okay, but the problem with political entities, with political subdivisions, with local governments, and their officials, and their directors, and all of that, is that they're held at that standard of can't take a position one way or the other. So not only is it a, can't use your venue, but if they use your venue, it gives at least the appearance that you're in support of that.
And that's, I think what he's asking, is the Chamber of Commerce-
Yep, that's what I'm asking.
Hire, or will allow vendors in there. We are leasing it to the Chamber of Commerce, or giving it to the Chamber of Commerce to have their event for Oktoberfest.
And there's the provision that doesn't allow a contribution through a third party that I just read, so.
And I think we had that last year, that's why I'm asking.
It's not an in-kind contribution from the city or the chamber.
But the problem is that the city has the appearance of supporting it when they allow it to happen on city-owned property, at a city-sanctioned event.
So all of this would be avoided if an issuing committee was registered?
No, no, the issuing committee registration is in addition to, because that's reporting contributions.
So I've had several conversations with Christine Reynolds at the Secretary of State's office. She is a campaign finance trainer, and has spoken with the enforcement side. And everything I've got correspondence from states that they only handle state and county jurisdictions.
That's correct. This is under the municipal clerk.
The municipal court does not, the municipality of Lamar's election does not fall under the campaigns, even if it's board and major election.
I understand that, but the city clerk has the same duties. In fact, there's a statute that says that the city clerk has the same duties of enforcement.
In the Home Rule Ordinance?
No, it's in the state statute, because there's nothing in the charter, in the Home Rule Ordinance that contradicts that, so the state statute applies.
So the Secretary of State's office is telling you the wrong information, you're saying?
No, they're not telling you the wrong information, but they're not telling you all of the information, which is the city clerk has a duty to enforce the same provisions for the municipal level.
Okay. Could just confirm, there was not an issuing committee registered through the question 300 supporters?
You had a question, Mike. Mike, you had a question?
Yes, I sure do. So let's go with the Lamar, the rod run.
Okay.
So they come to the city, and they file for permit to use the park, so-
For the car show, for example.
So this area is now their responsibility. So are we still supposed to be expected to go down there and police their event? I mean, let's move on past the abortion, or the, this issue, let's say there's somebody that the car show's allowed in there to promote or go against abortion, do we have to go in there and run those people out, too?
Do they have an issue that's on the agenda for municipal election regarding abortion? Because if they don't, then you don't.
So it's only if it's on the agenda?
Correct. If there's, it's only if it's going to affect the municipal election, and then the Fair Campaign Practices Act applies with the restrictions on public entities.
So in all essence, you know, the campaigners that are working on the petition could rent, they could use public sidewalks, or they could go door-to-door, or they could, because just like any protest or anything else, as long as they're not blocking, you know, public streets, or accessways, or anything like that, that's up to them. That's my understanding on that. I mean, we can't stop them from petitioning, we can't stop them from protesting, we can't stop them from using city streets to walk up and down and ask people, it's just when we're looking at parks.
Or private businesses, or private homes, or private yards.
So if they wanted to rent a location at some store and say, come in and petition, that's their-
Then they would have to report that in-kind contribution, or that contribution, monetary contribution.
So last year with the coroners-
So that's the first duty that I was talking about, which is on them, to make the report. The second one I'm talking about is, don't cross the line.
When the coroner's, people running for the corner position?
It applies to candidates and issues, so yes.
Because we had the candidates at the city complex that rented the facility. So you're saying from now on, we shouldn't let the Democrats or the Republicans have any use of any facility for the city of Lamar?
No, so that, the coroner's election doesn't affect the city of Lamar. I mean, the city of Lamar has no control over the coroner's election, because it's a county, it's a county level.
But would that be a campaign that we would need to do, though? Because it's a campaign election, and if we're giving them the facility-
So you have control over your elections, so these laws apply as applied to your elections, the city's elections, not the county's elections. But I would suggest you get further clarification on that.
So if we were to have, for the last election, when I was re-elected, for instance, the Zonta Club asked to hold the forum here at the city council meeting.
Okay, so that's more of presenting both sides and the factual statement, that you are allowed, because you're not taking a position. And it doesn't look like you're taking a position by giving the, by allowing it to occur on city property.
Okay, so we can have that in those type of situations.
Right, so that, exactly, so as long as you're doing the balancing thing, that is specifically allowed by the Fair Campaign Practices Act on local governments.
Okay, all right.
In my opinion. So, any other questions? I'd be more than happy to try to answer them if I could. But again, the reporting by the circulators, to the clerk, and then all those added restrictions that are on local government.
So just as a question-
On their elections, not other elections.
So what if they're going and they're setting up a table at Walmart? They have to-
If they have Walmart's permission.
Right.
And Walmart says, sure, put your table up there, we're not going to charge you.
They have to report that.
The fair market value of what they would have charged for that table has to be reported.
They don't charge anybody anything, so.
All right. Is there any other questions for our guest?
Then they would be safe to put Walmart fair market value zero, but at least get it on the report.
Okay. Any other questions for our guest?
Because it's going to come up.
That's what I was going to ask, how do you determine fair market value of, is it just based on if they charge you or not charge you, or?
So typically, when you're talking about a space, and this is delving into Colorado appellate law, so when it's, when you're talking about space, it's typically fair rental value. So if they don't charge a rent for that otherwise, then again, put it on the report, but the rent would be zero, the fair market value would be zero, because they don't charge anyone else. And in fact, it might even be proactive to put on the report zero, because they don't charge anyone.
Okay. So this is, is there any other questions for our guest before she goes?
I don't have any.
So is there any, is there any case law that, where the First Amendment butts up against the right for some individuals to protest, to petition, to object, or, you know, basically contest the petition that's being circulated at the same event in which they're acquiring signatures? Is there any case law where the First Amendment's come into play in those situations?
You know, I have not looked at that issue at all, Lance.
And I guess, isn't it, wouldn't it also be the inverse, by preventing individuals at an event where it's just open to the community, preventing them from being able to circulate petitions, or I suppose having law enforcement there to assure no one's circulating petitions? Isn't that also kind of taking a position in some fashion by not letting them access the public in that fashion?
So I would submit that what that's doing is that is implementing the requirements of Colorado Revised Statute 1-45-117, which is the prohibition against taking a side by a local government on an issue that's on a ballot, except for submitting a factual forum or basis that presents both sides and doesn't take a position.
Because the same was true last year, I thought, with, I'm pretty sure the ballot 300 had proponents at the car show, they had a booth there.
See, I wasn't at the car show, so I don't know. Oh, now, okay, there's a difference between an ed- Oh, now, okay, there's a difference between an educational and, because proponents of 300 didn't even circulate petitions until June and July, so they wouldn't have had a petition. They would have had educational materials about marijuana, and that's not prohibited by any Fair Campaign Practices Act nor the Colorado Constitution.
It was, it was the event at the park, I guess, I don't know specifically if that was a car show or what the event was, but.
Unless, I don't know that there was a June or July event in the-
I think it was like the, the, uh, Sand and Sage, that barbecue cook-off that they do?
I don't know.
I don't know.
That was, they had cars there.
That's typically, isn't that just two weeks beyond, after? Yeah, there's two weeks before or after, yeah. So I don't recall there being a petition circulated, but I do recall there being educational information, which is allowed, actually, on both sides.
So I feel like we, I feel like we met all of the, um, requirements of staying out of the election on the last election, the city council did. I feel like we stayed very neutral on that.
I agree.
I feel that we stayed out of the commotion and the, the issues of this whole thing. Um, and I think we did a very good job. Did you want to add something?
It was just sort of my question.
I'm not saying that, that you, that you didn't do a good job at the last election, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to be proactive so that there's not problems and complaints.
So the question being is, so for any city-sanctioned event, if we open it up to both sides, and one side chooses not to utilize the venue?
No, it's not about utilizing the venue, you only are allowed to do a factual presentation, either on paper or through a debate.
So if we say, hey, either for or against, if we're saying, you know what, we, we're taking, we're letting, we're letting both positions be a part of it?
It would be a prohibition for either to be allowed in there, to protest it or to collect.
So there's no prohibition for both to be allowed, is what you're telling me?
Right.
Okay.
Right, because you're talking about a pro-issue, you're talking about a pro-issue committee or an against-issue committee, so you can't, I mean, you can't let the pro and the against, because again, you're restricted by-
Wouldn't that make us neutral then?
No, because what happens is the Fair Campaign Practices Act only allows you to, and let me read that to you specifically, um, dispense a factual summary which shall include arguments both for and against the proposal on any issue of official concern before the electorate in the jurisdiction. And that's what you do with the debate, for example, or what you do with a factual, both sides, uh, submission.
Okay, it's good to know.
So, so yeah, so you would not let either side in to do?
I was asking the question about whether or not the city council in the city of Lamar stayed out of the last election for a reason. Because unlike this situation and the previous situation, when it came up, it felt, I, I personally, this is my personal opinion, I felt like we were pulled into this situation more than we were wanting to be in the middle of the situation. And I, I, as I said before, we were only seven votes. I said it at the meeting, I said it at the last election, I'm saying at this election, we were only seven votes, and we really don't want to be drawn into the middle of this.
The problem that the city had, of all it finished-
Well, I appreciate you putting these out there, and we will try to stay out of it as much as possible.
Appreciate it.
But I really don't, I really, it makes it very difficult when, you know, last year we asked for a very clean election, we stayed out of it so that way it would be a very clean election, had nothing to do with the council, and we're asking and expecting the same thing.
Absolutely.
And, you know, last year, we didn't have the opposition coming in to educate the council, we didn't have the opposition coming in to, you know, review everything. So I guess, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're going down a path that we've gone down before, where the council is getting drawn into this, when we're, all we're asking for is a fair election, so we know what direction the city wants to go.
So-
So if those, if those are the requirements, I'll ask that, you know, you also share them with the petitioner, so that they are aware of their responsibilities. I mean, we can block those things and we can make it to where those events are not happening, but we can't, we don't have the manpower to have our police watch every single event and every single park and every single-
Understood.
-city location and be a police officer there, oh, you're petitioning, we've got to get out of there at two o'clock in the morning or at five o'clock in the afternoon. We just don't have the manpower to do that. So I'll ask our, you know, the petitioner to please avoid doing that without any, uh, without any authorization from the city. Yes, Brent?
I would like to say, you're more than welcome to share these with us.
Absolutely.
If you truly, let me, if you truly want this to be done correctly and following the way of the law, instead of trying to prevent what the elders of Lamar have proven in the two years to happen, then by all means, please share with me how we are making this place so that it's correct.
I'll send you the same materials.
You have to transparent the entire way through, and I'm not sure what you're trying to get at. If, if you would like us to open the door, or I can promise you, nine days, we've already got a third of the same.
And that's fine, I, and my point was, is that, similar to that, I appreciate you bringing that to the council.
Just trying to be proactive, absolutely.
That gives us the boundaries and what we need to abide by.
I feel as you're helping us stay out of it.
Yes, it's helpful, and if you could help us to stay out of it that way, that'd be great, and I think that does help.
And prevent problems, like I said at the very beginning. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, because we don't want to be in the middle of it either. I mean, that's, we want to stay neutral, we want just the answer and direction, so.
Absolutely, totally agree, which is why this is such an important thing to know early, early on.
If there are questions, we will refer it back to them, but if you can share that with the petitioners, that way they are, make sure they follow that law too.
I'll make sure it gets sent to Mr. Bates.
Thank you very much. Does anybody want to add anything before we move forward, and, uh, from the group, or anybody else?
I just, we just wanted to bring that forth, because it is, that campaign finance amendment has been updated in the past.
Yeah.
And we wanted to bring that forth, just because we're trying to be open with everybody.
Sure.
So we're all on the same page, that was, no, we didn't give you the information, we just thought it was helpful to you guys.
Oh, no. And it's appreciated. I, I, my point was that we didn't want to get into the middle of it any more than we have to, so this helps us, keep us from doing that.
Yes.
So I appreciate that, um, and it kind of, since Brent's here, one of the petitioners is here, he's able to hear that and get the information that he needs, but, um, I think just in the fairness of it all, I, I just wanted to point out that we're not making this decision. We don't want to be in the middle of this again, so, am I correct, guys?
Yes, I, I agree.
So we appreciate that. Anybody want to add anything before they go?
Thank you for coming.
I appreciate the information, thank you.
Thank you.
That the information was presented to us at an earlier time instead of at a later time.
Yes, that helps a lot. Okay, so, um, with that said, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is agenda item number four, three, award bid 43 dash 006 for the city of Lamar Parks and Recreation Department concession contract. This is initiated by Kristen Schwartz and Rick Aker. Kristen?
Um, solicitor annual bid for the concession stand, which is located at the Lamar Sports Complex. Um, bid packets were provided to all local contractors and a request for the proposal was advertised in the local paper on March 8th. Um, I only received one, um, proposal back by the required five o'clock PM hour on April 4th. Um, the bid opening was held on April 5th, and, um, I reviewed the proposal, everything was, um, included that I had required, and we received a bid from Sergio Segala, um, and his bid was to pay the city 13% of their revenue from the concession stand, which was the same amount that he bid last year and was awarded the bid, so there was no change in that. The staff is recommending that council award the bid to Sergio Segala and allow the mayor to sign the contract, um, upon the approval of the city attorney, city treasurer, and the Parks and Rec director.
No changes from last year's contract?
No.
Okay. Are you good with the contract?
I've reviewed the contract, I don't have any issue with it, same contract as last year.
Okay. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approved facility use agreement with the Lamar Lins for use of some, of Lamar swimming pool. This was addressed by Kendra Cope, then the Parks and Rec Facility Manager, is she here tonight, or?
Uh, don't see him.
No, they asked me and Rob to, to move forward with this.
That's right.
Um, so it's the same agreement that, uh, facility use agreement that we enter into each year with the Lamar Lins for the use of the swimming pool. Um, with the exception of the concession stand, they don't include that, and the contract is from May 1st to August 31st. Um, so we're asking, um, the mayor to approve the facilities use agreement and allow the mayor to sign.
I've reviewed the agreement, I don't have any issue with it.
Second.
Okay, and the attorney doesn't have any issues with the agreement? We have a motion and a second. Are there any final questions, discussion?
This doesn't include any there overnight, still have to re, reapply for those.
That's great.